Call to order, prayer, Councilman Patterson.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Fill us with your grace, God, as we make decisions that will affect our borough and its residents. God, we ask that you continue to bless our police officers, our firefighters, all branches of military in your name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
Amen.
The United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite. Before we get seated, let's just take one moment to reflect. Tomorrow is Veterans' Day, so we can just have a moment of silence for those that are in our military and those who gave our lives for the defense of this country. Amen. Mr. President, roll call, please.
Mayor Reeves.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Patterson.
Here.
Ms. Reeves.
Here.
Ms. Patterson.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Dunne.
Here.
President Stewart.
Here.
Quick announcement, we did hold an executive session of council this evening at 6:00. The following issues were discussed, provided counsel an update on the memorandum of understanding regarding the employment for Chief of Police Edward Macheski, also gave counsel an update regarding the litigation and potential civil service hearing for William Connor, and we reviewed the settlement agreement for Alan Reeves. Presentations. The fellow members of council and myself had the pleasure of attending, I believe it was the 114th annual banquet for the Eddystone Fire Department, was held Friday evening at the Lazaretto and Tentacle, and just wanted to take an opportunity to recognize publicly those individuals from the fire department that received awards at the banquet. The 2014 recipient of the Chiefs Award was Steve Weber. The Cadet of the Year was awarded to Eric Roy. The Robert Van Gordon Award went to Dallas Waters. The President's Award went to Chief Andrew Walsh. At that banquet, they also recognized the top responders from the period beginning the 1st of November 2013 and ending the 31st of October 2014. The number-one responder that responded to 146 alarms was Justin Gross. Number two, with 126 alarms, was Alan Reeves III. With 119 alarms, number three was Steve Weber. With 105 alarms, number four was Derek Juan Harmon. With 100 alarms, Ben McCumbey. With 82 alarms, number six was our chief, Andrew Walsh. With 81 alarms, number seven was Robbie Sheraldi. Cody Evans was the eighth top responder with 76 alarms, and we did have a tie for ninth place. With 73 alarms responded TJ Walkner and Ray Weed. They also took the opportunity to recognize the top five folks that responded through the EMS, and the number-one response came from Dallas Waters. Number two was Alan Reeves III. Number three was Rose Albertson. Number four was Sean Swigum, and number five was Mark Mickelson. So if we could just take an opportunity, give the folks in the fire department a round of applause. And this past Sunday, the community got together for a recognition ceremony for those officers, police officers who have served the Borough of Eddystone. And Karen, I will give you a few moments to kind of give a recap of Sunday's events, since you were the individual that was the point-of-contact person in the planning.
We had a community-wide retirement celebration for Chief Ray Rodden, Lieutenant Robert Irody, Patrol Officer Alan Reeves, Patrol Officer Tom Riley, and Patrol Officer Jack Berry. And it was a potluck dinner, and it was a great turnout, good time, and it was well-deserved by these officers. It should have been done a long time ago. They should have been recognized when they went out. And I just want to thank everyone, everyone who participated, everyone who came to show their appreciation for these officers. It really meant a lot to them as well. Thank you, everyone.
Chief Macheski, I also wanted to thank you personally. The chief was the individual who went out and purchased a little wallet bifold. Inside the wallet bifold is a retired police identification card, as well as a badge that is a replica of our badges that our officers wore today that has the designation of being retired. So that's something for the officers to keep in their collection. And we also invited everybody back this evening so that we could actually read a resolution to those officers. I'll read Chief Rodden's first. Unfortunately, Chief Rodden was unable to be here this evening, but Resolution Number 0414, a resolution thanking Eddystone Police Chief Raymond Rodden for over 17 years of dedication and service, and congratulating him on his retirement. Whereas in 1989, Chief Raymond Rodden was hired as a full-time officer with the Borough of Eddystone Police Department, a graduate of the police academy, and has received multiple certifications and accreditations in law enforcement throughout his career. And whereas Chief Raymond Rodden has always been willing to take on additional responsibility, serving as range instructor, and as chief of police, a member of the Police Chief Association, Chief Raymond Rodden has always been passionate about his work in Eddystone Borough, and his efforts have gone a long way to enhancing the professional image of our police department. And whereas Chief Raymond Rodden officially retired from Eddystone Police Department on November 13, 2006, after 17 years of service here in law enforcement, now therefore be resolved by Council of Eddystone Borough that Chief Ray Rodden is hereby recognized for 17 years of dedicated and exceptional service to the Borough of Eddystone, the Borough of Eddystone, its mayor, council, residents, employers, employees, and officials wish to thank Chief Raymond Rodden for his many years of dedicated service and congratulate him on his retirement by William Stewart, president of Eddystone Borough Council, attested by our borough manager, Tim Pacente, and approved this 10th day of November 2014 by the Honorable Mayor Reeves. We do have in attendance this evening... Should I call them up and have them stand next to me while I read it for them? If I could bring forward Mr. Lieutenant Bobberati?
The Borough of Eddystone, Resolution Number 3-14, a resolution thanking Eddystone Police Lieutenant Robert Irody for over 20 years of service of dedication and service, and congratulating him on his retirement. Whereas in 1983, Lieutenant Robert Irody was hired as a full-time officer by the Borough of Eddystone Police Department, a graduate of the police academy, and has received multiple certifications and accreditations in law enforcement throughout his career, including a letter of accommodation for saving a young girl's life. And whereas Lieutenant Robert Irody has always been willing to take on additional responsibility, serving as range instructor, acting field officer, and lieutenant supervisor, and finally, serving as acting chief of police, Lieutenant Robert Irody has always been passionate about his work in the Borough of Eddystone, and his efforts have gone a long way in enhancing the professional image of our police department. And whereas Robert Irody officially retired from the Eddystone Borough Police Department on the 31st of December 2010, after 27 years of service here in law enforcement, and now therefore be resolved by Council of Eddystone Borough that Lieutenant Irody is hereby recognized for over 27 years of dedicated and exceptional service to the Borough of Eddystone, the Borough of Eddystone, its mayor, council, residents, employers, employees, and officials wish to thank Lieutenant Robert Irody for his many years of dedicated service and congratulate him on his retirement.
Did she get it?
So, can I get one?
So, now I can go.
Thank you.
If I could bring Officer Tom Riley forward.
Resolution Number 1-14, a resolution thanking Eddystone policeman Officer Thomas Riley for over 20 years of dedicated service and congratulate him on his retirement. Whereas in 1999, Officer Thomas Riley was hired as a full-time officer with the Borough of Eddystone Police Department, a graduate of the police academy, and has received three letters of accommodation during his service. And whereas Officer Thomas Riley has always been willing to take on additional responsibility, serving as firearms instructor, field training officer, and as armor for the Beretta handgun, Thomas Riley has always been passionate about his work in Eddystone Borough, and his efforts have gone a long way to enhancing the professional image of our police department. And whereas Officer Thomas Riley officially retired from the Eddystone Borough Police Department on May 25, 2011, after 12 years of service here in law enforcement, now therefore be resolved by Council of Eddystone Borough that Officer Thomas Riley is hereby recognized for his 12 years of dedicated and exceptional service to Eddystone Borough, the Borough of Eddystone, its mayor, council, residents, employers, employees, and officials wish to thank Officer Thomas Riley for his many years of dedicated service and congratulate him on his retirement.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations. Borough of Eddystone, Resolution Number 2-14, a resolution thanking Eddystone Police Officer Alan Reeves for over 14 years of dedication and service, and congratulating him on his retirement. Whereas in 1989... No, sorry, 1998, Officer Alan Reeves was hired as a full-time patrol officer with the Borough of Eddystone Police Department.
Excuse me, you're wrong. I'm sorry.
What is it?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Okay, back up. What does that say?
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay.
Reverse that, just let's it.
It's in a Word document, we can fix it. We have the technology. Whereas in 1989, Officer Alan Reeves was hired as a full-time police officer with the Borough of Eddystone Police Department, a graduate of the police academy, and has received multiple certificates and accreditations in law enforcement throughout his career. And whereas Officer Alan Reeves was always willing to take on additional responsibility, a 1996 graduate of the DARE Drug Abuse and Resistance Education, and became our DARE officer, and finally, serving as the acting chief of police, Alan Reeves has always been passionate about his work in the Eddystone Borough, and his efforts have gone a long way in enhancing the professional image of our police department. Whereas Officer Alan Reeves officially retired from the Eddystone Police Department on June 30, 2012. Correct? Correct? After 14 years of service here in law enforcement.
Twenty-six years.
Fourteen's wrong, too.
Let's take twenty-six.
I gave this to you to prove it. You signed the bottom of it. Now therefore, being resolved by Council of Eddystone Borough, that Officer Alan Reeves is hereby recognized for his... How many years?
Twenty-three and a half.
Twenty-three and a half years of dedicated and exceptional service to the Borough of Eddystone, the Borough of Eddystone, its mayor, yourself, council, residents, employers, employees, and officials wish to thank Officer Reeves for his many years of dedicated service and congratulate him on his retirement. Congratulations. I didn't miss nothing. I knew what I read.
Oh, it's a little hiccup stuff.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I had a protest.
You gonna try to squeeze back?
I can make you. I'll walk around.
You pay him, Bob.
And the last resolution to present this evening, and Chief Macheski and myself actually had an opportunity to go over to his home to personally congratulate him. Resolution Number 5-14, a resolution thanking Eddystone Police Officer John Berry for over 17 years of dedicated service, and congratulating him on his retirement. Whereas in 1966, Officer John Berry was hired as a full-time police officer with the Borough of Eddystone Police Department, once rescuing subjects from a house fire, and once arresting perpetrators of a bank robbery. And whereas Officer John Berry has always been willing to take on additional responsibility, Officer John Berry has always been passionate about his work in the Eddystone Borough, and his efforts have gone a long way in enhancing the professional image of our police department. And whereas Officer John Berry officially retired from the Eddystone Borough Police Department on December 17... or December of 1983, after 17 years of service here in law enforcement, now therefore be resolved by Council of Eddystone Borough that Officer John Berry is hereby recognized for over 17 years of dedicated and exceptional service to the Borough of Eddystone, the Borough of Eddystone, its mayors, council, residents, employers, employees, and officials wish to thank Officer John Berry for his many years of dedicated service and congratulate him on his retirement. Do you remember the bank robbery?
No idea.
These papers that are aside.
Eighty-three, December 83rd.
That's thirty years.
That's what year was that?
I don't know anything about it.
I think so.
Were you in grade school?
Little school.
I do remember those. MT.
Was it the old MT?
No, no, no. It was Eddystone Savings and Loans at the time. Remember Eddystone Savings and Lunch Up?
It was on Seville, right?
Yes.
Right where Supers is.
Yeah.
Or Elmwood.
It was Elmwood, and it was MT.
Keystone.
Keystone. Giving our age away next.
Why, you said "I'm old."
Yeah, I said, "We're giving our age away."
At our workshop meeting last week, I did a review of the right-to-know requests that were received in August, September, and October of 2014. Just wanted to review those and the responses that the borough has filed. On the 12th of August 2014, the borough received a right-to-know request from Route 4 of 13th Street requesting copies of the following: the payroll list of all camp employees who were paid by the borough for the 2014 camp at Lighthouse Hall, and a list of the total amount paid for 2014 and their rate of pay, as well as their position. The borough responded on the 22nd of August, and what was forwarded to Mr. Orr was a copy of all the payroll registers here to date for all of the employees that worked camp. So, Mr. Pacente, have you heard anything from Mr. Orr regarding any additional questions, or do you believe that this satisfied his request?
I believe it satisfied his request.
On the 19th of August 2014, boroughs are receipt of a right-to-know request from Route 4 of 13th Street requesting copies of any checks paid to Alan Reeves Jr., a former police officer within the year of 2013 or 2014, and for any grievance payment or a copy of the minutes showing the date that a payment was voted on in council for such grievance or an award. A response the borough provided was the 22nd of August 2014. And as of that date, there was no records, there was no payments to Patrol Officer Reeves. Boroughs are receipt of a right-to-know request dated the 19th of August 2014 from Route 4 of 13th Street. Mr. Orr is requesting a copy of the borough payroll sheet showing what rate Michael McNamee and Joseph Pretty received now in their new roles, since they were promoted. Michael McNamee was recently promoted to sergeant, Joseph Pretty was recently promoted to lieutenant. Sheet to include their new rate of pay and shift differential rate, also a payroll sheet showing the rate of pay prior to promotion and prior to shift differential. The borough responded on the 22nd of August 2014, and what we've included is a salary history change report showing Joe Pretty's rate back in July of 2014, and what his new rate is after his promotion in August of 2014. Also, the same for Joe Pretty, I'm sorry, for the same for Michael McNamee. And what does it say? An Excel spreadsheet that you did, Mr. Pacente, that showed their shift differential in overtime?
I guess that would be the one from the borough records.
That's from the borough record.
I think we did that at the time the borough was moving to rank, ranks in the police department.
On the 12th of August 2014, the boroughs are receipt of a right-to-know request from Route 4 of 13th Street. Ms. Orr is requesting a copy of all right-to-know requests cover sheets submitted by Glenn Wilson to the borough of Eddystone within the last six months, along with copies of the transaction receipts for money paid to the borough, and for all recent records received by Glenn Wilson. Borough's response was on the 22nd of August 2014, and I believe what you did was just copy all of the right-to-know requests that we received from Glenn Wilson and forwarded that accordingly to Mr. Orr. Correct?
Correct. I mean, maybe I should be clear. I don't answer interrogatories pursuant to statute, but we provide documents that exist in the borough. So when that request came in, I went to the right-to-know file in the borough, retrieved documents submitted by the requister, and then made copies of those documents and sent them to the right-to-know, you know, the new requister pursuant to the act. But I don't go ahead and count things, or, you know, I just, our obligation is to supply the documents as they exist here in the open record files.
Boroughs are receipt of a right-to-know request dated the 19th of August 2014 from Route 4 of 13th Street. Ms. Orr is requesting copies of invoices submitted to the borough by Taylor and Signor Auto Repairs for repairs on police vehicles for the month of May 2014. The borough responded on the 22nd of August 2014, and I see what you've attached, Mr. Pacente, is a copy of all of the service invoices for repairs performed by Taylor and Signor on all the police vehicles. On the 12th of August 2014, the boroughs are receipt of a right-to-know request from Route 4 of 13th Street. Ms. Orr is requesting a copy of all clearances to include Act 151 Child Abuse Clearances and Act 34 PA State Criminal Clearances with social security numbers redacted for the individuals who worked summer camp 2014. And I see, Mr. Pacente, your response of September 2, 2014 is a copy of all of those clearances for the folks that worked summer camp. Boroughs are receipt of a right-to-know request dated the 11th of September 2014 by Route 4 of 13th Street. Ms. Orr is requesting a copy of the contract issued to the new chief of police showing what salary and benefits he will be receiving, or a copy of the minutes of the council meeting in which the salary was voted for on the new chief of police. Mr. Pacente, I see you responded on the 15th of September 2014, and at this time, no such records existed by O'Hall. As you will learn this evening, actually, we announced it at our executive session, that we are still working on a memorandum of understanding between our legal counsel and the FOP for an agreement with the employment of the chief of police, which would include his salary. And as soon as that document is finalized from our legal and the FOP's legal, that would become a public document. Boroughs are receipt of a right-to-know request dated the 18th of September 2014 by Route 4 of 13th Street. Ms. Orr is requesting copies of, number one, the paperwork showing the total amount of recycling in pounds sent to the recycling plant since the program started; two, the name of the recycling facility that the borough uses to collect their recycling; three, the amount of savings the borough has received or been paid for with recycling; four, the amount the borough has paid for this program to be started; five, the number of households that participate in the recycling program; six, the documentation showing how the borough has paid for the recycling that they bring to the facility; seven, the number of new workers the borough has hired since the program has been put in place to assist with recycling, and the name and rate of pay for all highway workers. And, Mr. Pacente, I see that you responded to Mr. Orr's request on the 24th of September 2014. You've included copies of all of the checks that we've received from Recommunity Holdings Incorporated, which is the facility that we use for recycling. I see you've included an invoice that we had from Alpha Graphics that produced the brochure that was distributed throughout the community, as well as an invoice from Palm Printing, which was the logo, the magnetic logo that we have put on the side of the truck when we're collecting recycling, and a copy of the invoice from Waste Stickers Incorporated, which was the green white on, green on white stickers for recycle. thousand fourteen, once again from Route Four of Thirteenth Street, and he is requesting copies of the signed time sheets for police officers showing all hours and overtime worked for the months of August, September, and October to date. I see, Mr. Pascenthe, you responded to him on the seventeenth of October, two thousand fourteen, and what you included in your response, it appears to be a list of all of the payroll time sheets for all full-time, as well as part-time officers. I just wanted to see if it's for the entire period that... Yeah, for the entire period that was requested. Have you received any follow-up or anything with any additional requests for these, or we can consider these filed and filled and complete? And I do understand that you have another smaller stack that you've requested a thirty-day extension to fill, correct?
Eight more have come in.
Eight more have come in since?
All from the same individual, correct?
Yeah. We can charge for copies, but we can't charge for any kind of time.
Do you pay in charge for the copies?
Most times. Sometimes we waive it if it's minimal.
Mr. Pascenthe, I know that we spoke about this briefly at the workshop meeting. I know that, you know, sometimes satisfying these right-to-know requests is somewhat of a burden on the administrative staff. I, I know that I've spoke with Chief Macheski on several occasions, especially those that come in that are related to the police department, and it is a, a good amount of time that, that he is spending, a good amount of time that Tina is spending, and I'm sure amount of, you know, a good amount of time that you're spending. Do we, at this time, you think we need to bring in additional labor to address these requests, or is this something that you feel is if you've got under control to be able to satisfy these requests in a timely manner?
Well, let me just say, it's, it's a, it's a law, and it's obviously, we take it seriously. So when someone makes a request, you know, our attitude is not, oh, you know, another request in here, even though we may feel like that sometimes, but it does become burdensome in the fact that the chief of police has to spend time on non-police work, and Tina, I, I don't think I could do the, there's no way I could even do the right-to-know officer job without Tina. And the, the difficulty we have in, in our office is it's a small office.
Right.
But, so, I just say that to you because I want to make it clear, we, we, we take the responsibility seriously, but even though that responsibility carries a burden with it, but I, I don't think collectively in our discussions in the office, we feel like we, that we need anybody at this, at this time.
I appreciate those, while you've kept me very much in the loop in terms of, you know, which, which requests are coming in and how we are responding to them, and, you know, certainly as a, as a Borough council, it keeps us on our toes to make sure that we're following all the procedures that we need to follow, and it's very comforting to see that, you know, a request is going to come in, and within a very short period of time, no matter how volumous that request is, you're able to turn it around and give those payroll records over, or give those clearances over, so that's certainly a kudos to the documentation that Chief Macheski is currently performing, as well as yourself and Tina and the administrative staff, so. If it does seem to be a situation where you think you're going to need to be able to bring more resources in to satisfy the requests, then, you know, certainly let council know, and we will take appropriate action.
Thank you. I believe we'd be afraid to call us there, so.
Public Forum, Dambie Patterson. He can come up and put his name on the board, because I've been told that I have to make sure people come to the podium.
Last month at the Cal Pi Bingo, some residents and I got together and had a food swap right before, and we were discussing the possibility of maybe having a cookie swap around Christmas time, and would like to borrow or have use of Joey Hughes Memorial Hall for such activity around the twentieth of December. Of course, I don't have an exact date, because I don't know if anything's scheduled there, but I figured I would come tonight and ask if that would be a possibility.
Your request is for a community?
For, yeah, for residents, community, just to bake cookies, and then we swap and eat food and listen to Christmas music.
I guess my first question is somebody's going to use of Lighthouse Hall, or is it something, or Joey Hughes Hall, are you looking to use the kitchen facility?
No, everybody would bring their own cookies already baked, and it's just laying them out on the table and swap them.
Can I go sell them?
No.
For people who don't bake?
Nope. Everything's free.
What day of the week is the twentieth?
I think it's a Saturday.
I don't know. Have you been able to see if there's anybody booked at the hall, Karen?
Not for that one.
Nothing for the twentieth? Council, any questions for, for Dambie?
It's a great idea, it's a great idea.
What, you're looking at like twelve to two?
Yeah.
Council, any questions?
It's the day, November twentieth.
It's the twenty.
How would your cookie swap work? That's my only question.
Um, each, well, the cookie swaps I've been to in the past, each person that wants to participate will bring roughly five or six dozen cookies, one, one type, and then we lay them out on the table, and then you just bring your own cookie tin or whatever, and choose from the cookies that I'll do, and you go home with six more dozen cookies.
I will add it to the action item, so council, does that have any questions for Ms. Patterson? Then, you know, what we'll do is take action on granting that use at the next section of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Glenn Wilson.
First of all, it's, it's fine for Dambie to come and request of council how to reserve Joey Hughes Hall, but what would the normal procedure be so that people don't have to come and get a, a motion and a vote of council in order to... Is there a standard procedure yet for doing that?
Usually, if you want to rent it out, you have to go through ED.
Okay.
ED's handling the rental on the hall, on those halls. If you want to use Lighthouse Hall, you can go through Amy Riley.
So if they, if someone wanted to do that, and they called Borough Hall, they would be directed to the right person?
Correct.
So then they can just call Borough Hall if they want to?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And there's some additional information that needs to go up on the website, you know, that essentially council has had an opportunity to review, you know, like a rental contract. There are still some particulars that we're, we're working out, but, you know, one, one of the goals for very early two thousand fifteen is to actually be able to put a copy of the rental contract up on the website, as well as to put a rate of, you know, what it would cost to rent the facility. What we're looking at is it's a table, it's in four-hour blocks. Obviously, a breakfast meeting on Wednesday would be significantly less money than a wedding on a Saturday night, but, you know, we just have a, an hourly rate that we've assigned to it, multiply that out by four, and that would be what your, what your cost would be just for the rental.
Less twenty percent.
Less twenty percent for any resident.
Can I have permission to direct a question to Mr. Donahue about issues that he raised at last month's meeting?
Sure.
Mr. Donahue, at last month's meeting in the, in the roundtable at, at the end of the council meeting, you raised a number of issues. I don't know whether you want to run through those yourself, but as, as I recall, it had to do with most of the same things that we heard about on the right-to-know tonight. I know the K nine unit was the question, right? I'll, I'll let you re- review the questions that you raised.
What's, what, what exactly are you, what do you, what kind of response are you looking for from?
Well, my, my, my question is, as I, as I recall, there were questions about having to do with the, the assigning of rank in the police department. There were questions about the chief's salary and what arrangements had been made with him. There were questions about the K nine unit implying that it was a, going to be an excessive cost and was going to leave us one police officer down. And I, what, what I came to on that were two things. What I wanted to ask whether you had asked for that to be put on the agenda and had been rejected.
Let me kind of give you procedurally how we handle things internally here with council is, is that I've made a commitment as president of council is, is that I circulate a, an agenda the Monday prior, so one week prior to any of our council meetings, I send out a draft agenda. I give council up until Friday at midnight to add, correct, delete, ask questions on anything that's going to be on the agenda. I gather that information up sometime Saturday morning, Sunday afternoon, and then I make every effort by twelve noon, it's my personal deadline, although today, I'll admit, I didn't get the agenda out, the final agenda, until two o'clock in the afternoon. You know, but council has an opportunity, one week prior to any council meeting, they get a draft agenda. They have up until Friday of that week, which would be the Friday prior to the regular council meeting, to add things to the agenda. The rule that we've kind of invoked is that unless you put it on the agenda, we're not taking action on it. If you want to bring it up during a council meeting, during the roundtable discussion, that's fine, you can bring it up, you know, but we don't necessarily take action unless it is on the agenda, or, you know, in Dambie's particular case, it's, you know, something that's just customary to, you know, we're going to give a couple hours at Lighthouse Hall because we don't go Hughes Hall, because there's nothing going on.
So those concerns weren't submitted to be put on the agenda?
No.
If they had been put on the agenda, everybody on council would have known that that was an issue, and they could have done any research they needed to do to educate themselves on the facts of the matter.
But once again, as a, as a councilman, Mr. Donnie, who has a right to ask whatever question he'd like to ask during a roundtable discussion, I, you know, it's...
Oh, certainly, certainly. He, he does, and it was good to see him speak up in that case, because that's, that's part of the procedure, that's democratic, and that's, it's also good to hear from him, because he's been very quiet most of the year. So the reason I'm, what I'm getting at, though, is bringing the, all these questions up now, these are questions, you know, I've been here, I've, I've missed one workshop meeting all year long, otherwise I've been here for every meeting we've had, and all of these things, the K nine unit, the new patrol car that was being donated, the, the assignment of rank, these things were discussed, you know, like adding an item. We went over them, it got to be pretty boring to hear about them every month. But as far as I can tell, none of these, why are these questions being raised after you've already voted in favor of all those things? Because you've made, you voted in favor of the K nine, you voted in favor of Chief Macheski being appointed, and you voted in favor of the, the assignment of rank. So I would think that those would be the kind of questions you would ask before you vote on an issue, rather than long after it's already been decided.
If you read back on the minutes, the only question I had was I, I said, I, in the past, I've asked for a copy of the contract to the police office and have not received. And then on the other ones, I said, people have come up to me, and they asked me about the free police dog and everything else, and I asked questions that they asked me. And then the other question I asked was, because people said about the buses coming up and down the street, and then I, in turn, went down to the end of the street, saw there's two signs that says, buses go, if they're not in local, to go on two ninety-one. They're the questions I asked, because people came to me, they knocked on my door, and asked me questions. The only question they had for me that I asked for in the past was a copy of the police contract.
And I think they told you that there was no copy of the police contract.
Which does not make sense to me, because I've been in unions for a long, long time, thirty-something years.
To be clear, there is a copy of the police contract, it is just not a consolidated copy.
It's in many sections, under many individual...
Many sections and many different documents.
Many individual agreements.
To, to kind of bring closure to that is, is that Lieutenant Joe Pretty is, is the representative on the Eddystone Police Department, who is the FOP rep, so he is the liaison directly between the rank and file and the FOP. I've asked him to meet, so that we can sit and start to consolidate the contract. We do have a police committee meeting coming up on the first Wednesday in December, and it is our intention to be able to get all of those documents consolidated, have what I'll call a rulebook or a playbook that, you know, everybody can have on their desk, and they can reference what the policies and procedures are, and we would have that passed. It's our goal to have that early two thousand fifteen, is for council to accept that consolidated document.
And me and Bill talked more than once about this, and we both feel that in the past, the ball was dropped, because there should be a contract. Every time you negotiate a contract, you're bringing a contract to renegotiate.
Right, and this goes back many years.
I don't know how to, when someone asks me a question, and I'm on the police committee, of what I'm supposed to be looking for. It's not for me to change anything in the contract, it's for me to know the rules of the game. And like I said, me and Bill have talked about it on more than one occasion, and we've both come up and they, Bill has talked to, talked to Lieutenant, and he's in the process right now of getting paperwork together, and then we're going to meet with him, together together. And I've talked to Mayor Reeves about it, he's gone to the systems.
And I gave you the answer the way I have to.
Yep.
That they're all in parts.
And like I said, there should be a contract.
You sit down and consolidate them.
I literally have a contract from my previous employer from nineteen sixty-four. I have every copy of every contract from nineteen sixty-four in my filing cabinet in my house, and I was president for twelve years. So when I negotiate a contract, I always, you've got to start at something. I don't change everything.
So you're on the, you are, you're on the police committee?
Yes.
And you're, one of your fields of expertise has been that you have worked in, in union organizing or administration?
I still am.
Okay. And, and you've been a member of council for the last eleven months?
Yeah.
And this is the first time that issue's been raised?
No, that's what I brought up at the last meeting. I've asked them several...
So you've been asking for eleven months for a copy of the police?
Probably not eleven. There's a learning process when you become a new councilman, and these, my fellow members have helped me, and now, but I've asked for months.
Okay. So the fact that all these right-to-knows are coming, it has nothing to do with it, it's just a coincidence?
Every, as far as I'm concerned.
And the fact that the person who submitted the right-to-know showed up for the first time, and over a year at that meeting, had nothing to do with it?
Nothing to do with it.
Okay.
It's the first thing I said, I turned to Councilman Beth Bruce as soon as I saw them in here, I said, this is going to look nothing but bad, because I have questions, and I got to get them on the table.
Sure.
It's the first thing I turned to her and said, and then right after the meeting, I talked to, me and Mr. Stewart talked to her.
Right. Well, I, I can appreciate that if that was, if you had no knowledge of that, because it, it certainly had the appearance.
But as you know, but as you know, you had the right to put right-to-knows in. I sat here all last year and listened to you stand up in this corner.
I'm not, I'm not objecting to, it certainly is right to put right-to-know.
And sit there and say, I haven't got, I haven't received my right-to-know, my right-to-know, my right-to-know, my right-to-know, my right-to-know. So this mayor, Orr, has the right to have a right-to-know. Nothing to do.
Okay.
It's the first thing I said, I turned to Councilman Beth Bruce, soon as I saw them in here, I said, this is gonna look nothing but bad because I have questions and I gotta get them on the table. It's the first thing I turned to her and said.
Yeah.
And then right after the meeting, I talked to, me and Mr. Stewart talked.
Right. Well, I I can appreciate that if that was, if you had no knowledge of that, because it it certainly had the appearance.
But as you know, you had the right to put right to knows, and I sat here all last year and listened to you stand up in this corner.
I'm not, I'm not objecting to it, certainly it's right to put right to.
I haven't got, I haven't received my right to know, and my right to know, my right to know, my right to know, my right to know. So this mayor, Orr, has the right to have a right to know.
Sure.
As a citizen of this town.
I've never taken.
So am I gonna get damned him for that? No.
I've never taken issue with that.
Okay.
In fact, at at the workshop meeting when I was here, I basically supported Mr. Orr's right to submit right to knows and mentioned that uh the borough has always been very professional, if you've been at that meeting, you might have heard me say that.
I don't remember.
I I understand. So um at any rate, it's it's unfortunate that it had the appearance it had, if that's not the case. But the the timing of it was unfortunate, I thought.
And I I can assure you, that is the first thing Bob said. Very first thing he said to me.
Actually, she told me they were here.
Yeah, I looked up and I saw them.
I didn't.
Well, I'm I'm very pleased to hear that, cause I I would prefer not to have politics uh drive what happens at at the meetings. And if if, you know, I I take your word for you for that, and I I I I certainly believe what you're saying, and I'm glad that that wasn't the case. And that's really all I had to say, I just wanted to find out what the circumstances were there.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, thank you for your patience. Yeah, you're okay.
Right to knows. That's the procedure for putting out a right to know. When you hand it in, you have to hand it in personally, you have to have I D.
You have a full description on it on the website.
Mail it, fax, yeah, in fact, it could be anonymous.
So you really don't know where it comes from then?
I just know when they get here, yeah, I don't know where they come from. A lot of times, people hand deliver them to the office.
Is it dated and timed?
Uh I date them when I get them, and then plus five days, uh that's the time to respond. And then if it's a lot of material, I write a letter and say we need a thirty day additional time, we still have to stash it.
Okay.
So we track it, so to answer your question, we track the timing of it internally.
To kinda give you a little bit of homework to go home with, if you go to W W W dot Eddie Stone Borough, B O R O dot org uh under government, there is a right to know section. In the right to know section, there's two parts. One is a uh instructions, gives you numbered instructions on how to fill out a night to write write the no request. And then the uh, we also have a downloadable PDF form on the website, you can be able to download it, print it out, fill it in, and deliver it to the borough, I think if you fax, email, or hand deliver, or U S mail, correct?
And what does it cost to write the no?
What does it cost? Nothing. If you request copies, we reserve the right to charge you twenty-five cents a copy.
Just one, or cause police reports fifteen dollars, that's why I ask.
I'm a local government official, I'm not someone that sets the prices at the state level.
I'm just saying. You know, police report could be one page, right to know could be twenty-five.
And I believe that for Chief Macheski, that fee is set at the state level, am I correct?
Yes, that fee is set.
Cause if you write to know a police report, you still have to pay the police report fee.
Oh, I know that.
Okay. You could you could also ask in a right to know to examine the records without necessarily having copies made. Right, and we'll try to accommodate you, you may get in this room, yeah, you're right.
Last call for public forum. Mr. Vicente, Treasury report, please.
Mr. President, it's a computer difficulty, so the normal summary is not in the Treasury's report.
Okay.
What the Treasury report is for November is a true and correct copy of the cash disbursements report from the general fund of the borough, cash receipts report from the general fund, and the two thousand fourteen budget versus actual expenditures. And that's included in that's to uh to like the general.
Do you have a summary sheet?
I I don't, we're having a computer issue.
Okay.
So uh my claim will be to make it part of the record in the next one, maybe the record usually does, but I just don't, we don't have it tonight. I have a little bit difficult with the uh computer, including our emails, so we're we're getting it.
So we do not have a copy of the Treasury's report from November of October?
With all the supporting documentation, but not the summary sheet that we usually do.
Okay. Motion to table the Treasury's report for October two thousand fourteen until next month. Motion made the second all in favor. Aye. Give a thirty day pass. Cash receipts and dispersments journal?
I'll make a motion that we accept the cash receipts and dispersments barrel report as documented and make it part of permanent records. All charges paid.
All bills are paid, all monies be deposited. Motion made the second all in favor. Aye. Code enforcement report.
Mr. President, uh code enforcement department performed twenty-six inspections in October, issued two uh work stop orders or violations or citations, seventeen work permits were issued, and seven licenses were issued. The department uh received fees amount two thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Counsel, you've heard the code inspection, uh code enforcement inspection report for the month ending October thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, may I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept code enforcement report as read and make part of permanent records.
Second.
Motion made the second all in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Lyman, before we move on, how how have you been making out, I appreciate you stepping in and Dallas is out, absence, things going well?
Yes, they are.
I did receive an email from Stevie G earlier, he's looking to uh get you some remote login access uh.
Yes.
What are you looking for?
Trying to coordinate that.
Your borough, the borough email?
Well, they he stepped me up with the email, but I want to be able to email from the C downstairs.
Okay.
Right now, I cannot.
Okay. I'll get with him this week and we'll get a resolve before the end of the week.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vicente, the police report, please.
Mr. President, the police department had four hundred and sixty-five calls for service in October. They, the police department issued one hundred and seventy citations, there were seven accidents, there were twenty-two deaths reported. The department issued twenty-six parking citations and made forty-eight criminal arrests in October two thousand fourteen.
Counsel, you've heard the police report for the month of October two thousand fourteen, I have a motion to accept.
So order, Mr. President.
So.
Motion made the second all in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Fire report, please.
Mr. President, the fire department uh had a grand total of eleven alarms in October, five by day, six by night. There were ninety-six total members responding, that's an average of eight point seven percent. During the month of October, the fire company participated in fire prevention week. The students from the elementary school toured the firehouse, viewed the equipment, crawled through the fire prevention trailer with artificial smoke. The fire company attended Prospect Clark Fire Prevention with a hover crane. The company also attended an emergency drill at the International Airport. The crews there assisted with triage and carrying patients and safety observations.
Counsel, you've heard the fire report for the month of October two thousand fourteen, I have a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept the fire report as read and make it part of permanent minutes?
Second.
Motion made the second all in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Motion to approve the settlement agreement with Alan Reeves. Uh this settlement agreement is made the tenth day of November two thousand fourteen by and between the Eddie Stone Borough and the fraternal order of police lodge twenty-seven and Alan Reeves. Whereas the union has recognized collective bargaining representation on behalf of the officers employed by the borough, including and until his resignation as a borough police officer employee. Whereas in two thousand seven, the dispute arose between the parties regarding the borough charging the employee two hundred and fifty-two hours of sick time in connection with a hospitalization in conjunction with a cardiac catheterization. Whereas in two thousand nine, a dispute arose between the parties regarding the employee's request to carry over two hundred and four hours of vacation and twelve hours of personal time forwarded into two thousand six, or alternatively paid out at such time. Whereas in two thousand eleven, a dispute arose between the parties regarding the borough charging the employee eighty-four hours of sick time in connection with a hospitalization in conjunction with a gallbladder removal surgery. And whereas in two thousand twelve, a dispute arose between the parties regarding regarding the employee's ability to receive payout of thirty-six hours of personal time. Whereas without either party admitting any fault and solely to avoid the cost of uncertainty of arbitration, the parties desire to resolve the aforementioned disputes upon the terms set forth herein. Now therefore, in recognition of above recitals, in exchange for the mutual consideration set forth herein, the legal sufficiency of which each party hereby recognize and intending to be legally bound, the parties hereby agree to the following. One, no precedent, the terms of this agreement shall be of no precedent, and neither party shall use the agreement, its terms, or its underlying incident as such in any proceedings against the other party. Two, payment by the borough to the employee. The borough shall make payment to the employee for five hundred and eighty-eight hours of time at the employee's two thousand twelve hourly rate of thirty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents, for a total of nineteen thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. Such payment shall be made in twenty-three equal monthly installments of eight hundred and eighteen dollars and six cents, beginning honor before the first of December two thousand fourteen and continuing through October of two thousand sixteen, followed by the final installment of eight hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-four cents. Resolution of all disputes, the terms set forth have constitute a resolution of all disputes between the parties existing as of the state and as of the agreement regarding the employee's employment by the borough. No admission of wrongdoing, neither party admits or acknowledges any wrongdoing with regard to either aforementioned grievance, and each recognizes that this settlement is made without prejudice and in recognition of the uncertainty of the arbitration process. The entire agreement, these parties each acknowledge that this agreement sets forth the entire understanding of the parties with regard to the resolution of these grievances, and neither party is entitled to any relief not specifically forth herein. And witness thereof, the parties set their hands, the day and year set forth in the opening paragraph of this agreement. Counsel, I'd like to have a motion to accept the settlement agreement between the borough of Eddie Stone and Alan Reeves.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the settlement agreements between Alan Reeves and the borough of Eddie Stone.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Mr. Vicente, I'd like to do a roll call vote on this.
Ms. Thompson?
No.
Ms. Tyler Schur?
Yes.
Ms. Reeves?
I abstain, my reason for abstaining is because Alan and I are still married.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
No.
No.
President Stewart?
Yes.
Motion carries for two.
Now, the community use of Joe Hughes Memorial Hall on the twentieth of December two thousand fourteen between the hours of twelve noon and two P M. Uh the use would be for a cookie swap. And uh just to aid Ms. Patterson in her planning process, I would like to go ahead and give her approval uh for that use this evening, so if I could have a motion uh for the community use of Joe Hughes Memorial Hall on Saturday, the twentieth of December two thousand fourteen between the hours of twelve noon and two P M uh for a community cookie swap.
I'll make a motion to allow Dandy Patterson to use late uh Joe Hughes Memorial Hall on December twentieth, two thousand fourteen the hours of noon to two P M for a community cookie swap.
Second.
Motion made the second all in favor. Aye. Motion carries. Counsel, any other action uh that needs to be taken this evening in front of council?
Mr. President, um on the dates that you're getting ready to read?
I got one wrong.
Um actually, I have two.
Okay.
Um the ladies auxiliary night before Christmas will be held on twelve five?
Twelve five, I made that correction.
Okay, and then the senior luncheon is on the sixth uh from one to two.
And I omitted that from my list. Yeah, I got three though.
Also, the Santa toy giveaway is eleven A M.
Eleven A M?
And the pizza with the Santa is not overnight, it's like from six thirty to eight thirty, I think.
Six eight.
Six eight.
Okay, let me see if I have all these dates correct. On Tuesday, the twenty-fifth of November at six o'clock, we have a meeting of the Administration of Policy Committee here at Borough Hall. At seven o'clock that same evening, it's a meeting of the Finance and Audit Committee here at Borough Hall. At seven thirty, on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, is budget meeting number two here at Borough Hall. Budget meeting number one.
Yes, remember the meeting was pushed back because we missed the finance meeting.
Our next council workshop meeting is Monday, the first of December, two thousand fourteen, seven o'clock here at Borough Hall. The ladies auxiliary of the fire department is sponsoring the reading of the Night Before Christmas. That will be at Joe Hughes Memorial Hall, beginning at six o'clock. It is not an overnight, so please make sure you pick your children back up around quarter to eight, eight o'clock at the latest. Uh and that's it, has pizza as well, I understand, so it'll be pizza, Santa will be there, and uh we'll give a dramatic reading of.
Mrs. Claus is.
Mrs. Claus is giving the dramatic reading of the Night Before Christmas. That is Friday, and I know you're wrong in the agenda, it's actually the fifth of December. Monday, the eighth of December, oh, let me back up. Saturday, the sixth of December, down at Joe Hughes Memorial Hall will be our senior luncheon. That will be between one P M and three P M. The eighth, Monday, of December, is our regular council meeting here at Borough Hall. And how quickly the season is upon us, Saturday, the thirteenth of December, at eleven A M is the Santa toy giveaway at, is that gonna be Lighthouse Hall, right? Counsel, any other corrections to my dates, my days, my times?
Yeah, you have Lighthouse Hall for the Night Before Christmas, and it's actually Joe Hughes, right?
It's Joe Hughes, it says J L H M H, Joe Hughes, oh. Mr. Wilson, I also sent the agenda out to be proofread by council, and you can see that I'm riddled with errors.
So try.
Since you mentioned me, can I s- make a a small statement?
Small.
Okay. Uh I just wanted to say that from from what I've heard tonight, it it sounds like I may have uh misjudged Mr. Donahue's motivation for what he said, and I'd like to apologize to him if if I was jumping to conclusions. So thank you for your, thank you for your service.
Uh in regards to the website, we are still working with our web designer. Um we've been able to divert a lot of the traffic that would normally go to EddieStoneBorough dot com, but EddieStoneBorough dot org. Uh her recommendation is we were to gather up like names, and I know, Mr. Wilson, you have a lot of those no name names, so I had sent you an email um earlier today uh to see if we can come to some type of uh agreement uh to to have the borough take over uh some of those like no name names, so that we can boost the amount of traffic that we have uh coming to our new website. Uh we've also, I approved the the proof of a postcard, and uh that should be coming here within the next week, week and a half, and uh members of council, uh I'm going to charge you, along with the mayor and and the chief, uh with the responsibility of doing uh some good old fashioned door knocking, uh actually go out, greet the residents, hand them the postcard as opposed to stuffing it in the door, um introduce folks to the new website, some of the things that you can find in the website. Um this way here, you know, the community calendar, questions about right to knows, uh you know, who to call in terms of doing heavy trash pickup, uh who to call when you've got an overnight parking issue, it's all information, it's, you know, right there at your fingertips, that uh, you know, it's useful and we. And we also are going to start incorporating the videos to these meetings as well as making sure the minutes are uploaded. And I also thought about maybe doing the voice recording as well. I know that we do an electronic recording of the voice. This way here, we can put it right on the website and everybody will have access to whatever information they need. Roundtable, yes?
Quick question. Under events, are we doing the tree lighting this year? Santa Claus tree lighting?
I don't understand what you're doing there.
That has traditionally been a win committee slash home and school. So why don't we send an email to Jeff Torazio and see how the school would like to handle it?
Yeah, can you get down to the Jeff?
I'll stop there, I'll talk to him.
Okay.
Roundtable, I'll start with my right. Counselwoman Thompson?
Um, I just have a couple of things. First, I'd like to say congratulations to the retirees. Second, Tim, I did have a question in regards to the write the knows. Are they the only write the knows that we received since Alkins? Were there others besides Ralph that put in write the knows?
No, that's all. So all, the total, six in August, three in September, and eight in October, and they were all from Mr. Warren.
And my concern is, is that I don't recall us making such a big presentation about write the knows that come in. And then, Mr. Wilson had asked about the, you know, them attending the meeting, them, and I say them, which I'm guessing you meant Bill Connor and Ralph Core. Any resident is allowed to attend the meeting here, whether it's one a year, whether it's ten a year. We have an open door policy, so I'm not sure why the big deal was made that someone walked into a meeting. And I would hope that that wasn't just brought up because they're not liked by council members and maybe some townspeople. But everyone has a right to put in a write the know and attend the meetings, and I just want to make that clear.
May I respond to that?
No, sir.
No?
No.
Okay.
And I would also like to say happy Thanksgiving. That's it.
Counselwoman Tannenbaum?
I'll be quick because the Eagles come one in four minutes. Congratulations to the police officers and to all the retirees. Karen and I met with me and went to help. Education is really important and I'll stick with that. We're trying to get an after-stud program going at the elementary school to help the kids because I think they need some help. And it's our responsibility to help them any way we can. So I'm hoping to have everybody support as soon as I find out how she can help us get this program up and running and be able to bring it back to you. And the only other thing is I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and I believe it's already here, that's all.
Vice President Reeves?
Yes, actually, I have a couple with the community retirement party yesterday. I have a couple special thanks here that I would like to give that people that actually like really stepped up to the plate, worked me out. First and foremost, Ryan Lynch. Thank you, hon, very much. Cynthia Lynch. Amy Riley. Phil Stewart. Alan Reeves. It was through you guys and he's really helped me out and made it all possible. Thank you. Also, I've been asked several times about what's going on with the building, the apartment building on Eddie Stone Avenue. John, do you happen to know if there's any movement on that, what the plans are? I mean, it's been almost three years since we've had the fire down there. Place is an eyesore.
Yes, well, they, it was sold to a group from New York and they are supposedly getting architects to do some drawings for them.
Do you know what the intended use is?
To rebuild it.
They're going to use it as apartments? I mean, you're hearing.
That's all I hear.
Why yours going to use it for students, you know?
No, I haven't heard anything like that.
Okay.
I ran into a gentleman who built that and he said that they wished out to him for some questions about how to go forward with the remodel. It is being talked about and it's narrowed.
And then I have one more thing. I was asked about, I was asked about the neighborhood watch. And I guess I'll direct this to Danielle. Somebody said that there's a bank account that's associated with the neighborhood watch.
All the money came through the borough.
All the money came through the borough?
Tim, in fact, Joe has a separate account. And then he checks that came in, went to our booth at Tim. Is that correct?
If you say so.
Yeah, check with Joe, he has his separate.
I mean, Joe manages the accounts, I'm not trying to be funny. But that's an easy thing to find out if you want to copy or whatever.
Okay, that's fine, that's no problem. And also, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Counselwoman Patterson?
Again, I just want to say thank you to all the retired officers for all their years. I know the majority of you left. See Bob back there and Alan up here. Also, thank you to Karen for coming up with the idea to put that all together. I thought it was really nice and it was great turnout. It wasn't an empty table there. And just have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Counselwoman Gross?
I also want to thank all the residents for coming out and cooking yesterday. Really nice to see so many people there. And I do want to wish you all a very happy, safe Thanksgiving. And just one issue. I understand and respect for what you said, Danielle. But please don't respect how I feel because you have no idea.
I didn't mention your name, but I say council members.
Members, council members.
Council members.
Well, I am a council member and you have no idea how I feel.
Well, I'll take it as it is, that's what I said.
As I said, you have no idea.
Counselwoman Donahue?
I would like also to thank all the police officers around for their huge service. Also like to thank the firemen that got their awards and all the other firemen for all their years of service, also the Emmys.
Mr. Catania?
Yes. We're waiting for the contracts to be prepared and executed for the curb and sidewalk out front of the building. Soon as they're executed by the contractor and by council, then we'll proceed. It may, maybe that'll have to be delayed until spring. Maybe.
Mr. Duffy, I understand you were in contact with Catania's office and were moving forward with the contracts and a lot of it.
Getting the contract done doesn't depend on the weather, but. And they start on.
That's all I have.
Chief Pacheski?
Yes, so first I'd like to say thanks to a friend who advised me that our website needs a little updating, so we'll be doing that in the next couple of weeks. We did establish a tips hotline to go to tips@eddystonepd.com. That will be on the website and we'll be advertising that with the flyer that we hand out. Wanted congratulations to all the retired officers and Lieutenant Aradi, want to thank you for your service to the community. Like to wish all the veterans a happy Veterans Day tomorrow. Wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving holiday. And I'd like to remind residents to report any suspicious activity whatsoever to your police department and please look out for your neighborhood the holiday.
Mayor Reeves?
Yes, a couple of things. Mr. Donahue, you asked me a couple of questions last month and I told you I would give back to you on it. The two signs down on Fourth Street about buses, they are illegal. You have to get the code book covering those two signs. The ones that put the signs up was the highway, the highway guys. They're ordered by the former chief and the latest term mayor. And you said that you followed the school bus off Fourth Street up Eddie Stone Avenue, make a left on to Ninth Street going into the city, right?
It's Chester. I don't know if it was a bus or one of the transit. I don't know if they're there.
Right, well, I just wondered whether you, did you get a number off the bus? Know a number on the back of the bus? You do know that there's other school districts that keep buses down that, down on Fourth Street, right? There are buses down there from time to time.
Okay.
You asked about the dog. The canine dog.
What's Bill's?
That you asked. He answered, but at the executive center, we all brought up about the dog. I did not approve anything about the dog in any way, shape, or form. It was brought up at the council meeting by council. Chief Pacheski went over all the costs and everything that had been donated to the borough and what the borough would be obligated to pay. And it was, it was not bespoke by all council. Everybody, including yourself. For the training, the all nine yards if you get in the car, the dog, training for nothing. I guess that's just about it. And Danielle, I agree with you about the write the knows, one hundred percent of the way. But when they ask for the write to know, they should come up and pay for their write to know and pick it up instead of even sit there.
Who are you referring to, Alan?
Mr. Connors.
And then talk to Mr. Connor.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just.
I don't know why you even get over there.
I agree with you a hundred percent that everybody has a right.
Well, then, you know what, didn't you say a couple of months ago, put a lien on his house? Put a lien on his house then, Alan.
Hey, if we could, we would.
That's right, I bet you would.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you.
I know, one hundred percent.
Absolutely. That's all I have.
Mayor, anything else?
That's all I have.
First, I wanted to pass along, you know, my thanks to the fire department for the invite to their annual banquet. It was a good time had by all. It was a good party. All the folks from the fire department there as well as, you know, the surrounding community that comes in and supports our department. Congratulations to all of the firemen and cadets that were recognized during the award ceremony. Wanted to thank Karen for planning the event for the retired police officers on Sunday. And wanted to congratulate all of those officers that were honored for their number of years of service and the fact that the borough has finally come forward and recognized them for their retirement was long overdue. Couple meetings coming up. This Thursday, I was invited to attend the inaugural Delaware Valley Regional Economic and Community Investment Collaboration Roundtable. That's a lot. It's actually mayors from the surrounding area as well as council presidents are invited to come together. We're actually meeting at the Federal Reserve Building in Philadelphia, Seventh and Arch Street from two to four on the thirteenth of November. Representation will be there, Mayor Nutter from Philadelphia, Mayor Linder from Chester, Mayor from Allentown, the mayor from Trent, New Jersey, the mayor from Camden, New Jersey, the mayor from Wilmington, Delaware, the mayor from York, the mayor from Lancaster County, the mayor from Ridley Park, the mayor from Trainer, the mayor from Upland, mayor from Market Hook, mayor from Fallsboro, as well as members from their council are invited to attend to kind of collaborate and talk about the economic and community investment opportunities for our region. So I will certainly bring back a full report to everybody on that meeting. Also, council is invited to attend a meeting or a dedication and blessing ceremony of the Mercy Life Sharon Hill Center, which is Wednesday, the nineteenth of November at one o'clock. So I will pass that along to anybody who would like to put that on their calendar. Just very quickly to address Danielle and the write to know. A lot of times, and this is very unfortunate, that, you know, folks will turn in a write to know thinking that there was something that was some type of wrongdoing or something that is unethical, you know, something procedurally that's not being followed by the borough. And the whole exercise of bringing the write to know forward and letting everybody publicly know what the response was, was just a, you know, demonstration of the transparency that I believe we've all committed to as borough council folks in administering, you know, the day-to-day operations of our borough is that we are certainly not perfect. Certainly, there's room for improvement. You know, but the fact that we're able to produce this documentation and stand by the decisions we make was the reason why I wanted to go and do the exercise of looking at the write the knows that have been received.
And I understand that both, but with the transparency comes quality, which means treating all residents the same. I would hope that if other write the knows come in, you're going to go through the same process up here and introduce them to, and breed them off. Because then you get into treating different residents in different ways. We all know what I'm talking about and I'll just leave it at that.
Couple of things that we'd like to do for two thousand fifteen, and I think it's important that we review the write the knows. I think it's important that we, as a borough, all understand the response that we're giving the write to know. Also, something, and it's never too early for a New Year's resolution, but I will make the resolution now in two thousand fifteen, is what will be part of our meeting minutes is when we have a resident come up with a complaint or a concern that we actually document the fact that we've received the complaint and the concern. And then, whether it takes one month, two months, six months, make sure that we actually have documentation that's in place that resolves the issue. So that is something that I think is going to be common for us moving forward is that, you know, it is certainly not a pact to prevent somebody from turning in a write to know. You know, but I also want to encourage residents that, you know, you have, you can exercise your right to know by coming to a council meeting on a Monday evening, stand at the podium, and you will receive the same response from the borough if you stand here in person as you would if you submit a piece of paper. And, you know, that, it's an open door. We are open from eight o'clock in the morning to four-thirty in the afternoon. If you want to come in and you want to review documentation, you have every right to review the documentation. And sometimes that's an easier solution is if you're looking for something in the meeting minutes, Tina has a meeting book. You know, you can open up the meeting book, you can make yourself comfortable, she'll fix you a cup of coffee and you can review whatever you want to review. Lanceley, just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and look forward to seeing everybody in early two thousand, or early December for the Christmas holidays. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Can you get the budget code, Karen?
And I have requested four write to knows in the last six years, just for the record.